2014 East Fishkill Town Board Work Session. This is where the Town Board actually gets together to discuss matters of importance to the town. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is Supervisor's Announcements. I believe last week, must have been last week, we were talking about Route 82. New York State DOT has notified us that they're planning on replacing the temporary bridge on Route 82. We remember how well that went three or four years ago. We did meet with DOT, expressed to them our concerns again. They will try to make an alternate route through All Angels and Old Hope Well. They're going to be with the county. And this is actually very preliminary, but they are looking to do that project. So we're going to see how long that timeframe is. And wouldn't you know it, while you're talking about bridges, we get a notice from Duchess County. Duchess County has decided that going to close the Palin Road Bridge for work. So I don't have the letter with me, but Palin Road Bridge will be closed starting April 28th for six to eight weeks. There's going to be notices. We're going to get more information. We'll be going on the website. It looks like it must be like a bridge year or something like that. We're fixing all the bridges. And hopefully it's only going to be six to eight weeks. Our engineer's not with us tonight. We had discussed this with the county, oh, probably two or three years ago, and they were actually going to do the work. So just to let everybody know, we'll keep you posted, but Duchess County is going to be closing Palin Road Bridge on April 28th. Always something to look forward to. Hopefully the job will go well. I don't know why they don't do it in the summertime when there's no school buses. It just dawns on me, but no idea. So we'll see. Hopefully the job will go well. My only other announcement tonight is the Easter Egg Party is this Saturday, April 12th. It starts at 11:30 a.m. at the East Fishkill Community Center. And it's put on by our East Fishkill Recreation and our East Fishkill PBA. So I'd like to thank REC. I'd like to thank the PBA. I know the Easter Bunny is going to be there. Elmo might be there. I'm not really sure, but it should be a good time. And it starts at 11:30 at the East Fishkill Community Center. So that's all of my announcements for tonight. With that, we're going to get into the discussion portion of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the Candid Property Request for Proposals. This actually come up. We purchased the properties. Everybody does. Across the street from the Town Hall, 147 acres a couple of years ago. And for one of the reasons we did purchase it was the need to provide senior housing at that time. And Tom, I believe you recall, at that time, it's going to be a 220-unit senior project. Really, at this point, we're just looking to do it possibly as an up to an 80 units of senior housing to start off. And with the availability, maybe doing a second phase if it works out. Everybody's got a copy of the RFP. I will ask to take a vote on circulating the RFP at our voting meeting at the end of the month. I wanted everybody to read the RFP. And if you have any questions, one thing that I think that the board will agree is we're going to do, we're going to sell the property to a developer. We want the developer to build a senior housing project. And being we're doing it, we want it done right, which is really, I think, another reason not to do a huge project, but do a small project and make sure it's done correctly. So I provide, everybody's been provided with the RFP. And if everybody has any questions on it, I can answer them. The attorney is here tonight. He can answer them. If you have any engineering questions, the engineer's not with us tonight. But between now and the voting meeting, if you have any questions, please feel free to come in and ask, obviously. Any thoughts tonight? Any questions on the RFP as it sits before you?
I had some thoughts. So we are going to do, try and do two phases. So potentially 140 to 160 units total.
Could be possibly up to that.
What if the first phase is so successful, can we do more than 80 in the second phase?
Absolutely. The only constraints that we have at that site are the sewer plants here and our well fields are here and the creek is here. But basically, within the amount of area that's available to us, and Tom knows, we can actually create green spaces by using, what would you call it, Tom? I'm trying to think of the term. Conservation easements.
Right.
So that would protect our floodways, but they would still, we could still use that.
And basically, what the process is, is if you authorize the circulation of this, it's going to the four pre-qualified people who submitted in the last rounds. And then it comes back, and then the board could choose which one they're interested in. And it would actually be a real estate negotiation. You would come to an agreement on terms. Then the board would authorize a contract of sale of this particular, I think it's like 16 acres. And that contract would be contingent, of course, on the property being rezoned and for the developer being able to get the approvals for it. And then once the contract was done, then the whole environmental process has to take place. The public hearings, the, you know, rezoning if necessary to plan. So it's full, the regular process, even though the town's selling the piece.
But we just discussed that. But I would say, Nick, that we could go up to that. I mean, I think we're, especially here in the Hamlet, we're very sensitive to density. But one of the things that is really, I do get a lot of calls from seniors, and, you know, there's really no senior housing in our town to provide. But what would happen if we built 60 units and now is all of the seniors housing that was necessary, you know? And then we could actually look to see if we'd like to make, say, the next phase would be available to workforce housing or some other. And I, to be honest with you, I don't even like to categorize it. I think seniors may be senior housing. But after that, I think just housing. I don't like to say word. I think it's just housing for everybody, you know, public housing. Not public housing. That's another bad term, I guess, you know?
This would be privately owned. It would be privately owned by whoever buys it.
Well, why I ask is because I know that some of the senior housing in Fishkill has stalled a little bit.
Yeah.
But I talked to many people, and a lot of seniors, the reason why it's not as desirable is because it's in a commercial type of zone. So this is a very more rural type of zone. It'll be more desirable. And I think that we're going to draw seniors from other towns, not only ours.
Wow. It'll be interesting to see. Obviously, we want to serve our seniors, but it's great if we can serve, you know, the whole population. So, and I think it's great to get this going. And Tom, when we send these, we're going to send the RFP out to the pre-qualified, the four pre-qualified companies.
Correct.
They will respond to us, and they will actually have their own ideas.
Right. They'll come back with a generic proposal as to the, make the types, you know, one, two bedrooms, whatever they're proposing.
Yeah.
And they'll make an offer to you, price for buying the land.
Yeah.
And the request for proposals includes dollar amounts that they would have to pay for the sewer infrastructure and water infrastructure to tie in. That's all set forth here. So that would be on top of whatever the purchase price that they offer.
Yep. Now, say they come back with a proposal, and we don't like the proposal as it stands, say it is, oh, 60 attached units or, you know, or something. Maybe we'd want to see like detached units or different, different type of configuration.
You're free to negotiate. When a town sells real property, it doesn't have, you know, it's not like when we buy something, we have to bid and we have to use the lowest bidder.
Right.
On a real property sale, it's more than just value. It's what you want to get developed on the property so you can negotiate all of that with whatever developer you choose, once you get those proposals.
And I got to say, I think this will be very interesting to get these RFPs out to the pre-qualified developers and see what they come back with. And then I think, you know, we'll sit down as a group and review these and then come up with, you know, we want to come back, say, gee, we like this part of your project. Could you change this part? I think this is just a fantastic opportunity. So again, the RFP, there's nothing binding to it, correct?
Correct.
We can send out the RFP. If we don't like any of the responses, we can throw them all out. We're not bound. But I do think it is, is very important to start the process and get the RFPs out there.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'll also leave you, when all is said and done, over 100 acres of open space.
Yes. That's, that's, we have a huge water resource, walking trails, 100 acres of open space, and hopefully we can serve our seniors and pay for the property. That, to me, is a home run. So.
Well, that's why I asked. The more units you could put, the more valuable the property is, right? So if the Phase One goes so well, but after we enter into contract, that's it.
No, no. The Phase One is, you would actually be agree, what you would be doing is declaring approximately 16 acres of it at this time to be surplus property that we don't have any need for. So you would sell that, and that would be the Phase One. Now, if that goes well, there's still perhaps other property that you would decide is surplus, and you could sell that, and that would be the Phase Two.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
We have a lot of flexibility for the property and all that.
So you have to evaluate it each time and decide.
This is really the, the start. You know, we pre-qualified, and this would be the start, so.
Now, people that aren't on the list, the four that this is going out to, are other people able to pick it up too?
No, we pre-qualified. We sent them out. We notified.
Okay.
Ran ads and all that last year.
I think they were, the last time it was advertised extensively, and I think there were four or five that actually submitted.
Yeah.
Because where they're building a lot of seniors housing and it's filling just as quick as they're building it, is actually BK because it's really the only one doing it.
Well, and I got to agree with Councilman Alexandro. That being the rural area here, what I would like to see would be nice, if we could get sidewalks into town, and I just think it'd be phenomenal.
Yeah, the conceptual, yeah, the conceptual committee that you put together, they did excellent renderings.
Yeah. And we would still be looking to them. I know that, and that was one of the other things, too. We wanted to look to fit in, and I know that Malcolm Milice is on our Historic Society. He's very, very helpful with making sure that, you know, we're going to make, we're going to make this look like it fits in with East Fishkill with, you know, very nice building so it'd be, you know, very pleasing and maybe hopefully a bit historic looking.
That'll be the draw.
Yeah. It's going to be a great thing. Anybody have any other questions? Again, our professionals are available. But I would like to, I will ask for a vote at the end of this month on circulating the RFP and getting the ball rolling, so.
I've seen some of the paperwork that the four companies that qualified, that have kind of presented. That's just preliminary. That's not definite. We're going to have to review and discuss.
Yeah.
More of that.
Yeah.
Come to a definite project once.
Absolutely. Which is, which is the interesting part for us because we are really actually in control of this project.
Right.
And I think they did submit, and they submitted some ideas, but nothing.
Right.
So I think we, gives us a little, a lot of flexibility here. All right. So we're good with that. Again, ask, speak with professionals. You can contact me anytime, and I'll be asking for a vote on the RFPs at the voting meeting. Second on the agenda, there's a couple of zoning laws that I had asked the board to consider. One of them is to allow assisted living in a B1 zone. There is a project that would like to come to a B1 zone on Route 52. Proposal is for assisted living. And they made a short presentation here. They gave me a little brochure of what they propose, is a few buildings. And I'll see if I still have it. I'll make it available to everybody so you guys, so everybody could see what the proposal was. It was nothing. They just showed me really another project that they had done. But they're proposing two or three buildings of, and it's going to be, I think, especially for Alzheimer's patients, very big on Alzheimer's patients, that type of assisted living, a significant, you know, amount of assisted living. And not allowed in a B1 zone. Medical offices and things of that nature are allowed in a B1 zone. There's nothing that allows for an overnight stay in a B1 zone. So I asked them for what kind of law they had in other towns, and they had given me this copy of the law, which I forwarded to the board and to the town attorney for alternate care housing. I'm not sure it really fits. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on it. I would like to see the assisted living allowed, but I think this is a bit much. Any, any thoughts on the law that was proposed?
Well, I, I met with the town lawyer, I believe, yesterday, and we went over some of the issues on this. I think it's very lax.
Kind of wide open, isn't it?
Yeah. It's wide open, and there is a lot of stuff that they're putting in there that really does not qualify for whatever.
Yeah.
They intend to do with that.
And I think we wouldn't want to see that.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't mind doing something like that, but possibly more definite definition, a clear definition of what they intend to do.
And I would ask the board then if they would just contact me or maybe email the town attorney. Some of these uses I'm not crazy about, and maybe if you'd give us some idea what you'd like to see removed. And then we can clean this up a little bit. And this is, we'll be, hopefully, I guess, Tom, at the, at the voting meeting, we'd be setting the public hearing on these.
Right. What I'll do is wait for a few days for comments, but I, you know, spoke with the councilman yesterday and, you know, so I'm, I'll circulate a pared-down language on it, and then that would be what would be in the packets for the next meeting.
What we would consider.
I think we should, instead of alternative care, just assisted living, do definition of that.
I think so.
And go for it. I think that'd be nice.
Okay. Sounds good. Any, any other thoughts on that law? Okay. The other law, we actually pulled out and dusted off. That's why it says in the matter of the application of PREI, Hopeful Junction Associates. This is actually a law that we had proposed for the IBM West Complex some years ago. PREI was famous for wanting to do things and then falling off the face of the earth and never coming back. So we did propose this 194-67.2, creation of certain lots within the I-1 light industrial zoning district to allow flexibility in the creation of certain lots within the I-1 district. So we took this out, and this is a law that I would like to ask the board to consider. Not necessarily the petition part, but you see, it really actually starts there after number six on 194-67.2 in the bold. I would like to consider this, to apply this to the West Complex now owned by Linnell. And I would also like to allow this to be applied to the IBM West, the Hudson Valley Research Park also, because as I said, one of the things in that area we need to do is, is to encourage redevelopment, and this gives up some flexibility. So that's why I brought this out, and I'd like to have that. And we'd also set the, the public hearing at the end of this month. So did anybody have any thoughts on that law? Any questions for the board or the attorney while we have it here? Again, if you don't have them tonight, you can certainly contact the attorney anytime.
Again, John, this issue here, I met with the town lawyer yesterday, and I had a lot of questions regarding this. Excuse me. I, I went back on this petition, and it's quite old. I'm all for the developer in that area and rezoning it. But I think it should be put together, first of all, I would like to see the petitioner put something forward at this time. This is a company that is no longer in existence. So before we actually, I mean, for the matter of discussion out of mind, we'll look at this, but I actually would like to see another petition put together with the specifics of what the intent is. Again, I have nothing against, but presenting this to the board, it's, yes, it's an idea, but it was very confusing when I got this document.
Okay. Like I say, the petition part was just their petition. And the, with 194-67.2 is really the actual, the actual law. No, I understand that my only problem with this whole thing is I hate to sit here and wait for a petitioner to have to come to petition us, and I'd like to kind of get out in front of this. And that, that's why I'm bringing this law back myself on behalf of the town for getting the petition part, but the really 194-67.2. I would like for the town to allow the flexibility. You know, it's a funny thing when you look at zoning, you look at zoning. We adopted zoning, I think it was in June of 1964. Now, take zoning. Zoning is land use. We proposed land use back in June of 1964. Back in 1964, we allow horses, two acres, I think it's two acres for first horse, acre for every horse, the raptor, something like that. But six acres for chickens. So I said, well, boy, back in 1964, they must have had a problem with chickens, but they didn't have a problem with horses, you know? But the problem is when you're trying to imagine the needs, as with that example of the horses and the chickens, you know, I say, we're making these rules, and I don't want our rules to stand in the way of what could be redevelopment. We could wait, and absolutely, I'm sure within our next two years, somebody will come to petition us for just such a law. I would much rather, and this is my, and if the board disagrees with me, I have no problem with that. But this is my frame of mind, is that if we adopt this law, people, companies will come in and look at it and say, this is flexible, we can do this. If you do it the other way, and you wait for them to come and petition us, my concern is, okay, you're adding another two, three months onto the process. You know what I mean? I'm trying to, to be ahead of it.
I, I totally agree with that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, but this is such a big decision that we're making over here. Rezoning this old park, park area that, it was in Australia one time, that it has to be a little bit clearer, the intent. I know what we're trying to do, but this document over here, even though the law states in there, it's.
Well, if I may, I think actually, if you, you just look at pages three, four, and five, or really just the, I think this, this was what was submitted in '06. This was when a property owner wants to change the zone, they submit a petition. I think what the supervisor wants to try to do is if you just take pages three, four, and five, and consider this on the board's own for adding these provisions, and basically maybe we should just run through what they are. We're not changing the zoning. It's still an I-zone. It's an I-1 zone. But this kind of modernizes some of the concepts. It does three or four things. First thing is it gives the planning board a little more flexibility when somebody comes in for a site plan approval in an I-zone, which would be basically the West Complex and IBM. The flexibility to consider not having them build 5,000 parking spaces. If they come in, that's going to be a storage facility. Sometimes the standards, parking things require overbuilds. So this gives the planning board flexibility to look at what the industry is doing in, you know, other towns, other areas. It also allows for the area to be developed, I'll describe it like a business condominium type property where the buildings could be separately owned on separate property, but all the parking would be a common area that all the buildings would share. Because many of our big companies nowadays, they don't want to be a tenant in a building. They want to own the building. But they don't mind paying like a common charge to take care of the maintenance. So this would give authority to do that, to have the buildings on their own lot, as long as there's agreements about the parking. It also allows for, when you have these massive industrial buildings, that if they want to come in and do a modification to the building up to 4,000 square feet, but not for additional office space, if it's for utilities, things like that, they can go through, just through the building department and be allowed to do a 4,000-square-foot modification to the footprint of the building, but only for utilities or non-occupancy type things. So that's the, the flexibility that would be. So really, it would be pages three, four, and five that we'd be considering.
And Councilman, I can, I understand your concern. Again, this would only apply to this certain area, number one. And I think what we're, and let me just, what we're seeing as, as with when the zoning originally came in, these were actually two large industrials, actually, one large industrial site all owned by IBM. But as we see with IBM downsizing, and, and there's so many vacancies over there, this just allows a flexibility to if a building is to be sold off or something like that and somebody to come in. And I think like Tom says, some of the big develop, not the big developers, but the big corporate players out there want to own their own building. So that's just the flexibility this would allow. And again, it's only for that area, so I just qualify that. Any other thoughts on the board?
Well, my, my thought about it was, when we pass the priority economic redevelopment zone, this will work hand in hand. The whole idea for us to pass that resolution is to loosen up.
Flexibility.
Flexibility there so we can invite more companies to come in, different companies. They want to own their, they want to own their property and building. They don't want to lease it from IBM. So this, to me, is like the next step after we pass that resolution.
No, I would agree. I think it would be the next logical step. Again, we could wait for somebody to petition, but also that's a turnoff to, to one of the people that are, you know, entities that want to come in. You're adding more layers of, well, yes, you can come in, but we have to pass this law. If we do it up front, I just think we're, we're being more proactive, and that's really it.
In other words, what we're looking at is rezoning the 194-67.
I don't think.
Is it a whole? The rezon is just a modification.
We're adding this to the code to give this flexibility. The property is still going to be an I-1 zone. It's still subject to the uses that are allowed in an I-1 zone. This just allows those kind of planning things, that the buildings can be separate, 4,000 square foot, things like that.
So we're taking all that three, four, and five?
That's the only thing that would be considered.
Should be as is, or should there?
Well, no, it'd be, obviously, it's, you know, subject to tweaking or changing.
Okay.
I think anything that makes that land more desirable, there's just a benefit for the town. I'm in favor of this.
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, they still have to come in for, I mean, we're going to have to change laws galore if they're going to build, we're still going to have to change to build a dome, aren't we?
Yeah.
That's right. That's, you referred that to the planning board for discussion, and the planning board making comments back to you. And that's to modify, we have the special permit for outdoor, large-scale outdoor recreation, which is how the golf driving range was created. So the, that permit is going to be modified to allow indoor/outdoor large-scale recreation.
That's going to be tweaked again.
But it's a special permit, which is just special requirements that apply within a regular district where it's allowed. This would only be in the I-1 zone, as would the dome type.
And Tom, when we make this law, we could actually make it apply to just that area.
Well, it's that, and also it has a minimum lot size of 150 acres.
Yeah.
So it has, you know, it's really geared to.
To that sort of large industrial site.
So if we had an I-zone down 82, it's not going to qualify because it doesn't meet the conditions.
Unless it has 100. And it also has to be on state highway, at least one state highway, and has to have at least one of which will be signalized, so.
All right. So this works in conjunction with the resolution we passed.
Yeah. And I, I'd like, I would like to think in the intent, because we need to.
Spark.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So.
Do we have time to look this over?
Absolutely. We're just going to set, I would think that at the voting meeting, we'll be setting the public hearing, and we're going to have plenty of time for us to discuss that, discuss with the attorney.
And the public hearing couldn't be until June because you have to go through a process before.
Yeah, we still have to do secret, and all. So this will allow the board to be more than comfortable with what we propose.
So next time we see this document.
It will be pared down to just those three pages, and then you can make whatever other changes you want to do.
Okay. So then we'll move forward with that. And again, I just, I think it's in our best interest to be proactive. So we'll see how it goes. Number three on the agenda for discussion tonight is an unsafe building. We have a memory, a town engineer's memo about this house that is located 26 Fishkill Hook Road in Wickapee. And I spoke with the building department previously about it. The property owner had been notified back in February about concerns. And then the, this has been a very devastating winter. The actual, the snow loads collapsed the roof and portions of second story collapsed into the house. Let's see, February 1st, February 20, on February 21st and on March 4th. We inspected the site on April 1st, found that the roof and portions of the second story had collapsed on the roof. However, two chimneys on either side of the house remain standing. The chimney and exterior wall, if you look at it on the north side of the house, kind of leaning towards the hook road. of the house, kind of leaning towards the hook road. And in our mind, this does present a dangerous situation, that the wall chimney could actually fall into the utility lines in the roadway. The engineer has proposed, as an interim measure, recommended the wall chimney are collapsed back into the house to eliminate any potential interference with the adjacent utility lines or roadway. My office has received several calls from concerned citizens, because when you come down Fishkill Hook Road, you stop at the stop sign, and the house is right there. I've spoke with the property owner who was in the audience tonight about this, relaying the very need to, to take action on this. It's a concern to me. It's a concern of public safety. And that's my problem. If anybody's out and about, take a ride up to Wickapee, it's right across from General Store. It's on alert as you head up the hook. And we've had, we've had situations like this in the past, where we have actually had houses taken down, but we've never had one so close to a road. We've had them in the past where they were not this kind of a danger. It was a danger was to the property itself or anybody. This is actually, in my mind, and I, and the engineer agrees, this is a very big concern because of public safety, people and a public roadway and the utility lines. What we could do, and Tom, I'd have to ask, how do we, we would, we could go about actually having this house taken down ourselves. We have that authority? We had done that in the past.
Yes, there's a process you have to go through.
The process is notification.
Correct. Based on a engineer's report, then the town board would note, direct that notice be given to the property owner. And if the property owner failed to comply with the order, then the town can have it done. It's leaned back in the taxes.
Yeah, yeah. And there are certain timeframes for.
Correct.
The property owner to get back and stuff like that. And understanding a property owner's position, I don't mean to be heartless to the property owner. Certainly, we want to work with a property owner. But I have to say that this is, it creates, in my mind, a hazard to the public safety. And I think the town has a responsibility to act. So I would ask the board, I would think, at the voting meeting, to start that process, but working along with the property owner, so the property owner understands that we don't mean to do this ourselves. We would rather he, they took, they took care of this problem. But I don't think that we can just wait for this all to happen. I mean, I'm very concerned about public safety. So, take a ride by, let me know what you think. And I would put it on the agenda to start the process. And obviously, any time in the process, the homeowner, the property owner can step in and resolve it. I'm fine with that.
The property owner doesn't want to go forward to?
Oh, we've spoken with the property owner. He's very willing. His way, there's insurance issues, there's attorney issues, and he's very willing to do this. All due respect to the property owner, that we've gotten to this point, I find a bit concerning. And I, I will leave it at that. We shouldn't be at this point, but now we are at this point. And I don't, my problem is, we are to the point where I consider it has become a public hazard, you know?
So if the property owner is put on notice that this is a public hazard, if something happened, he's liable?
Well, I don't know. Now, the.
So might we.
So might be, yeah. Now, the property owner had been served a remedial order, I believe it was back in February. I believe a court summons has gone out. The property owner has been duly notified.
If the board might remember about two years ago, well, it happened before that, but there was a tree on Shen and Doe Road, which was not on town property, but it was adjoining the road. And the tree fell and struck a car that was going by. And so obviously, they sued the property owner for the tree, but they also sued the town. And it, right now, the law in New York State says that if the town becomes aware of a danger to the traveled way, even if it's not on their property, the town becomes responsible, once the town has notice of that, or should have had notice of. So this is why.
Yes.
All communities are being a little more cautious when every, anything is, even if it's not physically in the right way, if it has the.
Ability.
Possibility to fall into the right way, because we're, our roads are open for people to drive, and they accept the, the fact that we're all keeping it safe, so.
Roads are our assets. So.
Yeah.
Well, we did this a couple of years ago with this property on top of the mountain.
Mm-hmm.
And we just did it recently over our Flower Road, didn't we?
Yes.
In that vicinity?
We had talked about that one on Flower. I don't think.
Is that the one with the fence around it?
The one that we put the fence around?
Yeah, no, that, he fenced it based on the order. He had, because under the dangerous building law, you have to do one of two things. Either you make the building safe, or you demolish it if there's no other way to do it, so.
But that, that one got rectified. It took a few months.
One was demolished because it was in danger of collapse. And the other one was going to be demolished, but then he put a fence up to keep the public away from it. That was, and both of them were attractive nuisances, where people could be attracted to it, to break into it, start a fire, things like that. They weren't close enough to the road to, well, they presented other hazards. That's recognized.
Okay, so what I would propose to the board, number one, first and foremost, I would like to work with the property owner. But being this is, this is a concern of public safety, I think that we need to start the process also of just having the town having removed.
And just sort of, what this first step is just to send notice, a formal notice, and give 30 days' notice, and, and indicate that if there's a disagreement at the end of the 30 days, the property owner has the right to make his or her case to the board that, you know, your engineer's not right. It's not struct, you know, come in with structural engineer, whatever. And then if the board still isn't satisfied, you would then, if you were going to go forward, adopt an order giving the property owner an additional period of time to, to comply before the town stepped in. So it's, I think the supervisor's just concerned that while you can work with the property owner, you have to get the clock started so that.
Because there are these periods of time that we have to wait anyway, so. And it's very concerning. All right. That will be on the agenda for the voting meeting. And if you would all just make yourselves available out to Wickapee, just take a look, so that you guys can get an idea of, of the, of the issue here. All right. And last, for discussion, we had gotten copies of recreation facility fees. First one, we had discussed at the last voting meeting, we had awarded bids for recreation facilities. The one bid we did not yet, I don't, well, we got a bid, but they didn't meet the 1,000 minimum bid for the Red Wing, Red Wing concession stand bid. We had gotten one bid, but they didn't meet the $1,000 bid, minimum bid. They, that bidder has requested that we lower it to $500. I guess there have been some issues. Being Red Wing is a shorter season, basically Memorial Day, Labor Day, and it's very weather driven. They've asked for a decrease in the minimum bid. So we've gotten this letter from our legislative aide on behalf of this person that made the bid. And I didn't know if anybody wanted to consider that. Something we would consider again at the voting meeting.
One, one thing I'd like to look into, Mark, Mark might be able to answer.
Oh, good. Mark's right here.
I know. That's why I'm asking. He's the money man. He's the money man. Is there a way to break down all these different little concession areas to get a ballpark? I know we can't get an exact number on what the electric is that this booth uses, that booth over there uses, or the one over on 52 use. But we should be able to get a, without a special meter. But is there a way we can get a ballpark idea of what they actually use in electric? You know, because we can compare when they're open and when they're not open.
Boy, I'm glad I'm not Mark.
Because what, well.
Perhaps.
I want to know, we're getting, we get $1,000 or $500 to put somebody in business for a year.
This one has a separate meter, I think.
Yeah, it does.
This one does, yeah. Well.
So why don't we check the meter readings?
Then maybe what we're going to do is check the other two.
Because it would be, if the 500 plus they paid their own electric.
This one, they're going to pay 500 plus their electric?
Yep.
I mean, that's all I'd like to see, because some of these, I mean, we're in business to help people, but I'm not in business to give you a free place to run your business, and on top of that, pay 20% of your electric bill? You know, is what I'm wondering. So if we could get a ballpark idea of what the other two facilities use, you know, if it turns out they're using $1,500 worth of electric, then, then it's got to go up.
Yeah.
That's not what it does.
Let me, let me, let me save Mark here. This one, I think we could, because I think there is a meter there.
Yes, it's a pay plus.
So we could actually, we could request from one of our, one of our clerks to take a look at central Hudson bills, find out what the typical bill is for Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Well, I think last year, that was the confusion, because the meter was put in, and then the, the vendor paid for the meter being put in.
Yeah, and we had to reimburse them for the meter.
Right. But so it is there now, so.
Yeah, we hadn't had a meter in the past.
Correct.
Which is a very good point.
Right, right.
And that's the problem. Would say out here at the main complex, we don't have a separate meter for that. So that becomes a bit of a challenge. Probably at the soccer complex, we probably do.
Yeah. I mean, I'd just like to get a ballpark idea. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need these places at all these places. I mean, we need food concessions, and they are doing us a favor. But I'd like to get a ballpark idea. I mean, a favor's a favor, but if they're costing you $3,000 worth of electric, and.
Well, if you don't mind, Peter, if we do, because we've had this discussion before. Let us check right now, because the other two bids have been awarded for the.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Well, let us start on this one. And what we'll do, Mark, would you mind tomorrow contacting a clerk?
Yeah, not at all.
And just see if we get those numbers for that concession, so we can stop down and get the meter number off of that. No problem.
No, this one, they pay plus electric, so it doesn't matter. They pay 500 plus the electric bill.
Yeah, I wrote a note on mine, because last year, that was the issue.
That was the issue.
In your resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, no. So I know we're not, I know we're not losing money on that one.
Okay. So you're just really worried about.
I'm really worried about some of the other two.
Okay. So this is something, because again, we've already.
We talked about it before, yeah.
Okay, we'll get, we'll see if we can get that information. The one in the main complex is a challenge, because I don't believe there's a separate meter.
No, probably isn't.
But let's see what we can do. I'm just thinking how we could do that with the one in the main complex, but we'll talk about that further. Take a look, see what you think about, if you, if you'd be consider, if you'd like to consider dropping the bid for Red Wing, so we do have so many concessions there. And, and we'll, we'll take that up at the voting meeting. If you, if you really don't think we should, please let me know. I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I do think it's a, it's a tough one there. Again, because it's a shorter season, and because of the weather, you can have a hot summer, you can have a cold summer, and nobody comes there. So it's a, it's really, I wouldn't want to be bidding on it. I think it's a tough, tough one to bid on, so. So, but that will be coming up. And all these, these board discussion items will be on the voting, the agenda for the voting meeting at the end of the month. All right. Any other questions and any items on the discussion? Okay. All right, there being none, we do have liaison reports. John, was there one more? Did I miss? Recreation facility fees on safe buildings, zoning laws, canon RFP.
The fee schedules.
Did, did I not get like?
Just the one where all the schedules.
The schedule fee?
Yeah.
I think she proposed some changes to the veteran, rec passes.
All right. Now you get back to that one. Controller has, the controller has corrected me. That's the last time I saved the controller, let me tell you. Mark could have politely said, "We're fine, John," and then afterwards, he could have said something like, "Oh, you forgot one." No, no, I've got it here.
He's driving the bus. He's just backed up and ran your rail.
I know, I know. Oh, I, I do apologize. Yes, I did have this written down, the other fees, and I just kind of got stuck on that one. Thank you, Controller Posniak. Okay. Yes, we did have the veterans fee. My apologies on that one. I know that at the Limekiln recreation facility, there was a proposal to, and also Rockland, Red Wing and Limekiln, proposals to grant veterans with veterans ID cards and active duty veterans, active ID cards, free, free individual passes at both Limekiln and Red Wing. And I believe we're going to give, provide the families with half-price passes. So, and I think that's a, a very nice, a very good thing to do. Discussion, you okay with that, Mark, as controller? I think that'd be.
I mean, I think it's a significant benefit to them, and it's not a significant cost to us, because the numbers aren't great enough to.
Okay. All right. Anybody on the board? Any discussion? Any questions about it?
Just reviewing some of the fee schedule proposed. At Limekiln, the facility rentals, the tent, the Route 376 complex pavilion, and the gazebo, the non-residents pay the same, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Only in the gazebo, the non-resident pays the same as a resident. So just a note there, that should be changed.
Okay. We should take a look at that. Route 376 pavilion.
The gazebo on the bottom?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They probably missed it, but.
Okay. I'll bring that, well, I'll bring that to.
Oh, the pitches only, they pay $20.
Huh?
The gazebo?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll bring that to the rec, the rec directors.
Probably they just overlooked it, but, because they changed all the ones from last year. It was the same. And this year, we made the change that the resident pays less than the non-resident.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on any of these summer camp programs?
One of the things that I know we have discussed, and kind of along with what Peter had said previously, I know with our, the lighting of the fields in the main complexes is very expensive. And I would like to see if we can get a better idea, because it's controlled by another company that is out of state. I don't know how this happened, but it's when they install the lights. I'd like to see if we get a little more handle on how much it does actually cost us to operate those floodlights, those, those big field lights. So I'd like to look into that also, Peter, if you don't mind.
Yeah, if I remember, they talked about it at one meeting, and I think there's a different price for different months. Is that true? Do you remember hearing that, Mark?
Well, apparently, when the, the lights were bid out, that came as part of the package. And I don't know if it's lifetime or whatever, but there's a company in Indiana or something.
In Indiana.
Controls when the lights go on and off and everything else.
So can we get, is there any way to get out of that?
We'll, we'll have to investigate that. And Mark, if you don't mind, tomorrow.
The last time we went through it, it turned out that everyone kind of accepted what the electrical cost was for those lights. It's, you know.
Yeah, but I'd like to get to the bottom of it and see if we can get a little better handle on that, because I'm sure, when you look at electric bills, that's probably the largest electric bill in the town of East Fishkill.
When you look at electric bills over the last couple of months.
Except for sewer. Oh, Mark, oh, Mark. Did we really need the controller you assigned at this meeting? Oh. And you know what? We did, we did talk about, you know, we did get our electric bill, just like everybody else. We were, none of us are happy with our electric bills. And the town electric bill, again, is significantly higher than previous years. So I, again, we're looking into doing some solar. I'd like to get a handle on solar. Mark and I discussed it. And maybe I'm thinking just, I'm trying to get a handle on the kilowatt hours. I believe that's how they, they, they do these things. Kilowatt hours needed for the town hall. I'd like to see if we can get solar panels. Let's start here. If this works, then I like to progress out. And just maybe the community center, maybe Limekiln. I'm really very upset with the power companies right now, and if we can have solar to offset, I'd be thrilled. So Mark and I had looked at a couple. And I'm going to get, I'm going to get myself the range of kilowatt hours that we need, require here. And then if we can, we'll price it out and bring it to the board and see what the board thinks, because not happy with these electric bills, as I don't think anybody in Dutchess County is.
We put windmills up by Tom's house.
Well, you know, it's funny that you say that. If you go up to Limekiln Recreation, for some reason, the wind never stops there. If we put, if we could put a windmill at Red, at Limekiln, I think we'd be fine. But I definitely want to look into alternate sources of energy, because this is just, just too much. Councilman, was that the only thing in the fees? Was just the, the pavilion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll speak with the rec director about that one. We're okay with the veterans' fees. I think that's a really appropriate thing to do for our veterans, so. Okay, very good. Controller Posniak, may I move on?
You're off here, John.
Thank you. I feel like, I feel like I'm taking off here, so. All righty. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. I think we're to the point in the meeting for liaison reports. Peter, any reports on our highway department? How are they doing?
Uh, doing good.
We're not snow, we're not planning on snow anymore, thank goodness.
We're not doing snow anymore, but they did come up with a new item, a couple new items. They've been working on repairing the catch basins, clean, repairing the catch basins. And right now, there's still about 50 more that need to be repaired.
Wow.
There's good news for it.
And you know, and when you, being, knowing a little bit about the highway department, I mean, when they say 50, these are immediate need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They see more that they're still in immediate need. And they've also been working on pothole repairs as well, because for some reason, potholes came up this winter with the nice winter we had. They stopped using patch, cold patch, because the good news is, the blacktop plants are open.
Oh, good.
And that's the two main things they're doing right now. And one other thing that isn't there, under highway, town cleanup day, very successful. Probably had 50, 60 people show up here, plus we had groups show up at two other fields. Like to thank Royal Carding for supplying the dumpster, East Fishkill Provision for supplying lunch, and Hopewell Hot Bagels for supplying breakfast. And that's their commercial that they get.
No, they were very good. They're very, very big supporters of our, of our townwide cleanup. Just a little quick note about townwide cleanup. I know our, our police department always cleans up Limekiln Road. And this year, they were cleaning up, they saw some documents off to the side of the road. It looked kind of official, so then they clean up a little further. They found a safe, they got dumped. So we'll leave it to our police department to find a safe that had been stolen in Connecticut. They got the safe open, and they dropped it off here. So as part of townwide cleanup, we've actually solved a crime.
Help the crime.
So this is a wonderful thing. I didn't, you know, this townwide cleanup is a good thing, so.
And how all the fingerprints on it belong to their office.
No, they wear the gloves you supplied them, so they're very thankful. No, they wear the gloves you supplied them, so they're very thankful of that. So, and one thing I would note, that in the governor's budget that he just passed, for some reason, the governor felt compelled to give all the municipalities a little bit of extra money for the severe winter, they call it severe winter highway funding, and the town of East Fishkill's going to get $35,000, so.
Don't tell Dennis.
I'd say...
He's already spent it.
Every little bit helps, Governor, every little bit helps, but we're nowhere near mandated leave, so, but we do appreciate the extra money, so. Thank you, Peter, thank you. Councilman DeLisandro, planning and zoning?
Uh, yeah, well, we're getting busy in the planning department, lot of projects coming, everybody knows about the dome, and that 52 corridor's, you know, bustling a little bit.
Yeah, you know, I...
Another application coming forward.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting you say that, because I was in planning today, and they said, gee, we're getting awful busy, and, very good, I'm hopeful that this dome project's actually a catalyst for bringing other businesses in, because it's very good to hear that our planning board is getting busy.
Absolutely, and Tom, how's the cell tower field going?
Actually, it's before a federal judge, and the, our opposition papers are going to be filed next week, and the judge will probably have a decision late summer.
Okay.
Okay.
And I had one other thing, that there is a fraud alert going on, they're mainly targeting businesses, persons are calling, claiming that they are with Central Hudson, and that...
My favorite company.
They are going to close your, that you're in default of your bill. If you don't pay within 45 minutes, they're going to come and shut your electric and gas down, yeah.
Forty-five minutes?
So, after, I, I actually got this on Monday, so I was speaking to the gentleman, and I said, well, I sent my payment in, so I don't understand, he's saying, they're saying that you're getting a notice, you're supposed to get a notice 30 days ago, that Central Hudson was no longer accepting, they were changing their payment systems, so they couldn't accept the check that you sent, or if you paid by credit card, that you had to go to greenpointbank.com and make a money transfer.
Wow.
And it had to be immediate. So, you know, after I heard that, I called Central Hudson, and they, you know, said that this is a scam, and so everybody knows, Central Hudson will not shut your power off like that, they will only, if somebody is in default, they will come in person to speak with you.
Really?
That is their policy, they will come in person, so.
Wow.
Beware.
So did you get to deposit me?
Yeah, all right, all right.
So you, so you actually got the call?
Yeah.
Really? Wow, I'm shocked. It's amazing, you know, that this happens in this day and age.
And I called our police department, they came and took a report.
Good, 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 good. So everybody be on the lookout for this scam, Central Hudson won't come and shut your power off.
No, they won't.
Unless they come and visit you in person.
That's right.
Okay, that's good to know, good to know, thank you. Councilman Franco, recreation, anything on the recreation front?
Yeah, we had a great meeting Monday night, we had the opportunity to, to meet Dan Frioli and Russ Hernandez from the King Dome.
Oh, because they did say they were going to meet with Red...
Yes, they wanted to work, they, they expressed interest in working with the recreation department, and it was, it was a great meeting, and they answered a lot of our questions, a lot of concerns that some of the board members had. And I thought it was a very good meeting, and everybody left, I thought, fairly satisfied, so, and we're eager to have them here, and they're eager to work with us, so.
Good deal.
We'll see.
Sounds promising.
It was, it was very good.
Sounds promising, good. How's our fields doing, any, any update on the fields?
Uh, the fields are good, opening day is Saturday.
Saturday.
And I think we just secured the police chief to throw out the first pitch.
Oh, no kidding?
Yep.
Wow, oh, good.
And the parade, that's right, the parade in the morning at nine.
Okay, parade starts, now where does it start, down by Trinka?
Uh, down by Trinka.
Okay.
Ends at the field, Field 1.
Okay, oh, excellent, I hope the weather is, is with us.
Soccer should be open, everything should be, should be good to go.
Excellent, boy, I tell you, after that, this winter...
Oh, the kids are dying to be outside.
Yeah, and besides, I never thought, I never thought the snow was going to go away, it's just like, wow, and opening day's coming up, but, good to hear, good to hear.
So they're going to close 82, right?
Yes, closing down 82, probably before nine o'clock.
Okay.
When the parade starts.
And the parade starts at nine o'clock, ends up at Field 1.
Ends up at Field 1.
Excellent.
Right around 10.
Oh, sounds good, sounds good, hope the weather's good for us, so. Good. Councilman Marinero, Hillside Lake Special Park District?
Oh, not much to report, except that one test, that was done on one of the wells that came out negative, and...
And that's good news.
Catch basin we cleaned, and it's possible retesting in the near future, but...
Yeah, good.
That's what we got.
Yeah, and that, that, that negative was, it was very good news, certainly keeping an eye on this, and trying our best to make sure, this is a health-safety issue, so certainly stay on top of it, so. Very good, very good, anything else?
Basically, we're going to have our monthly meeting, I believe it's next week.
Okay.
We'll attend that and see what their concerns are.
Okay.
And bring it to the board next time they will meet.
Good, very good, thank you very much, appreciate it. I guess that's all that I have, I did, oh, police, I should do police, I know I announced about the safe, that was kind of a, that went long down cleanup. I went, I attended the police meeting, we had, we have a monthly meeting of our police officers at the Little Town Hall. Once a month, we meet, and I have to tell you, it's, you know, it's run by our chief of police, Chief Nichols, with input from, you know, lieutenants, the captain, sergeants, and everybody, I got to tell you how impressed I am with our police department, just keeping everybody up on the latest news, latest procedures, policies, changes in regulations, and it was a very productive meeting. But I think the one thing that does impress me so much is that everybody's so dedicated, and they are very professional in how they handle themselves, and the, you know, the information that's given out is, is very, very good, so, very good meeting. Unfortunately, burglaries are up, and heroin is an epidemic, you know, the hard drug use is, is a terrible thing. I'm glad to see that CAPE, the Council on Addiction Preventive, I can't really recall what CAPE stands for, Council on Addiction Preventive, oh, forgive me for that one, but anyway, CAPE is, is doing public presentations throughout the county, and they are a great group. So this drug abuse is a very, very big scourge, and hopefully, CAPE and education and things in the schools will help us with this problem, but the police are very good on it, so I just wanted to thank them for all their work. With that, I have nothing else to report tonight, the next town boarding, town board meeting, excuse me, is April 24, 2014, and...
John, I have a couple of announcements, a couple of statements that I want to, I want to read to the, to the board. I would like to take the opportunity to thank our hard-working local assemblyman, Karen Michael Lohler, for his recent accomplishment, for the elimination of the corporate income tax on all the manufacturers for the counties in New York State. This is definitely a small step in the right direction for the small business community, but much more needs to be done. As our town supervisor mentioned many times in the past, unfounded mandates have to be put on the table for the serious discussions at the state level. Thank you again, Mr. Lohler. I have prepared another short statement, just give me one minute, we'll go through this. Tonight, I'm very pleased to hear that the members of the town of East Fishkill Board and our town supervisor are doing whatever it takes to welcome and create a new business for our town and our citizens. This is great, and it must continue. Our job should be to open the doors and make it simple for company of any size to do business in our community. We can't, we can't forget that businesses are the fuel of our local economy, in order for our community to survive and continue to grow without the addition of tax burdens to the individual homeowners. I strongly believe that if the leaders of our community, together with all the departments, example, the building, assessors, finance, legal, and all different review and regulatory boards of our town hall, will work for the same goal, then and only then, we will achieve, achieve great things for East Fishkill. Lastly, and more importantly, it has to be made very clear that what these leaders tonight do for a certain sector of our society has to be uniform and speedy for all local business. We could not and should not accommodate big corporations, while at the same time, not do the same for the local builders, contractors, or local developers that for years are trying to put a project forward while doing backward flips. Again, I will remind our community leaders here tonight that our town has been done down this road before with IBM, who for years have received taxpayers' dollars and all kinds of government favors, not mentioning the environmental permanent damage to our localities, and then decided to cut jobs and leave East Fishkill for more profitable grounds. Let's not forget that the small business community is the backbone of our local economy and infrastructure, and that we should cherish them, because they are our neighbor, my mechanic, my dentist, my favorite restaurant, my physical therapist, and so on. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
And you wrote that?
That was from you? Yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, I feel the need to respond, understanding that we need small business as well as big business. I've always said that corporations like IBM are the anchor store, had we not had IBM here? IBM, you know, when you talk about IBM, you talk about tax breaks, and I disagree totally with New York State tax system and how it's set up, I have huge problems with this, but I, and I understand that IBM invested $4 billion into the site over there back in 2004, and a lot of it, the breaks were given on sales taxes and certain taxes during the construction, it employed a lot of people in that, and when you look at IBM, as I say, is our anchor store, there's a big ripple effect, which is never counted in, as far as you, you know, when you look at the numbers for, they based, they based the IDA grants and, and tax breaks on headcount, which I think was a fallacy in the beginning, they should have never done on headcount, because if you consider what IBM does, there's a ripple effect throughout the community. If IBM hires truck drivers, shippers, vendors that service all of their, so there is a larger, you know, you can just say IBM, and yes, they're down to 3,500 people, but they are a much bigger part of the community in, in, in the ripple effect throughout the economy. I agree that I'd like to see home building come back. I would say, you, and you know, the thing is, home building, house building has always been a staple of the town of East Fishkill economy. We were a railroad town, we were agrarian, we had a lot of farms, IBM came in, and we started doing, a lot of small, local builders started building, which was great. Unfortunately, in the 90s, Toll Brothers came in, and big corporate guys came in, and now you're seeing instead of a 30, 30-lot subdivision, you're seeing 200-lot subdivisions, which has really changed things also. I agree that we need to support our local businesses, I also think that we need to encourage large businesses to come in, and that's what I have to say. And one last thing, yes, you need to make it business-friendly, but you do not give away the store, because again, you know, it's IBM, as you pointed out, IBM did contaminate the water over in Shenandoah. They're continually pumping, they pump a million gallons a day, pump and filter. Shenandoah, they built a, I forget, $3 million pumping plant to do just that up at Shenandoah, they're doing very well with it, should never have happened in the first place, but they are stepping up to take care of that. Yeah, it's tough, you need the big business, you need the small business, and you need some amount of regulation to make sure we don't do that to the environment again, so that's what I'd like to say, Councilman. But we do need to move forward and do what we can.